Okay, all right. Please rise for the invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, God of heaven and earth, we thank thee for this day of life. We thank thee, Father, for the blessings that come from thy throne. We just pray tonight, Father, as the city council meets tonight, that the business conducted will be for thy glory and to help this city out, Father. We just pray that you just be with those who are in control, that you will be with each council member, and be with the acting mayor, and just let them just know that with thee there is leadership and guidance, and we just pray for thy mercy and grace. Blessed is this meeting, just for thy glory and for the benefit of Ducoyne, we ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen, standing up for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no need for remote participation, so we'll call the meeting to order, roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Carnes.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Downs.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes from our previous meeting. I hope you've had a chance to look at them. Hearing any changes or their motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes.
Clear.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. There is no treasury report. We have the bills from the previous time period. Does anyone have any questions, or do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. No proclamations, no guests, no appointments, no consent agenda, no public agenda. We will move to the ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2023 R.0502, a resolution authorizing redevelopment agreement between the City of Ducoyne and Mark Kent Lake concerning 11 West Main. I understand we have some questions about this, and Jeff's not here, so if it's okay, we'll just table it at this time. Is that...
So you'll need a motion to table till next...
Yeah, move.
Have a motion to table it?
Table second.
Motion by Wade Cruz, and second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Resolution 2023 R.0601, a resolution authorizing purchase of a forcible entry training door from Dinjas Fire Company for a debate or public display. Mike, for the fire department for training, I'm...
Dave's not here, but Dave hardly asked for anything, so I'm sure that we can...
Yeah, this will be reimbursed from their fire board. They have a fire training board, I believe, but they need the city to purchase it, and then they'll reimburse the city for this.
I make a motion to put it on public display?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Resolution 2023 R.0602, a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus property. Ruth handles this. This is some older vehicles and office supply we're gonna put up on the iBid site. It's basically junk, right, Ruth?
Well, I understand there's a van that a lot of people have asked what we were gonna do with it, so we're hoping to put that up for bid and maybe make a little bit back on that van, but as far as the rest of the stuff, it is pretty much just junk, so we need a resolution to get rid of it.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Ordinance 2023 O.0601, an ordinance modifying section 25, article 2 of the ordinances of the saved Ducoyne for mowing. This is for debate and public display.
You wanna take this?
You wanna take it?
Donnie, you wanna talk about our mowing?
Mowing.
The ordinance we have now is already effective. It's got a ticket, they got 10 days, if they can, to get to court. It may be five weeks before they get to court. All they gotta do is they knock the other end of this grass that's growing till the next court date, which would be in excess of four, eight, eight weeks anyway, grass can keep going after the ticket period. Doesn't work. That happened. So the ordinance we're gonna do now, the way I understand it, is they're going to propose that in the newspaper, they'll put out an ad at the beginning of the mowing season, you're responsible, keep your grass under eight inches. This is your warning. We may give them, and I don't know how the ordinance is gonna be written, but probably tell them one time verbally, but we're not babysitting them. If you don't do it, the city will mow it, they'll be scumming mow it, and you will have a lien placed on your property, probably $200, $250 each time that we do it.
And this is similar to many other municipalities around here. It's modeled after Carbondale.
Carterville, Marion.
Yes, that's the way Carbondale was built up.
Right, right.
But it needs to be done because the ordinance right now, the way it's written, has got no teeth in it whatsoever.
Yeah.
So will we eliminate the $75 a day that was in the old one thing and just stick with the price?
I would say, I don't know how they write the new one, but it would be, to the fact that they'll be warned one time, and that's it, and then one more, whatever the price is. I think the total down here charges $250, they're trying to cut the city, and they put a lien on the property.
Okay. So I would say we're gonna eliminate that $75 per day.
Yeah, it says a fine could be from 10 to no more than $7.50. It depends how much of the mowing needs to be done, and then for the lien, if it comes to where we have to file a lien, it's $250 and the cost of the mowing.
Okay.
Then the badge, you can write a ticket every day and bill them every day. If they go to court date, let's do all the one amount.
I know.
There a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Ordinance 2023 R.0301, an ordinance regulating excavation and surface restoration of city property and right of way for final approval. We talked about this before, Ruth, right, with the utilities and Sparklight?
Yes, and Frontier is wanting to come in and start their fiber line. I believe Clearwave's already started theirs, but they were grandfathered in because they had whatever right of way with us in agreement, so this will initiate a permit process for us, for other utilities to do the same.
Needs to be done. I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Resolution 2023 R.0604, a resolution closing City Hall in honor of Juneteenth celebration for 2023. That'll be for Monday, June 19th. It's a federal holiday that's been enacted since 2021, so there a motion to, on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Resolution 2023 R.0605, a resolution authorizing the use of ARPA proceeds to pay Amaran for the Enterprise Boulevard project for final approval.
This, we want to use ARPA funds to pay our portion of a grant that was previously approved from DCEO to run the electric line through the industrial park. So what the final phase will do, we'll loop that all the way back through, so then if someone wants to come or put a business in the industrial park, all that electric work will now be complete.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Cruz, second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Resolution 2023 R.0606, a resolution condemning 29 South Maple Street for final approval.
This property actually burned, so if you look at your pictures, we need to get that, yeah, so no one enters that property.
There a motion on the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes, second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? If not, we'll move to commissioner comments.
I have nothing. Same.
I would like to say that I met with the wastewater treatment plant with Jeff Pruski, and then Derek and Chris that all work out there, and that they're doing some amazing things out there to upgrade and to make it more efficient out there, and it's something that I don't think we pay any attention to, you know, we just take it for granted, but the things out there that they're doing are very, you know, are really gonna help the city in the long run. And also the water department, they've been working on a lot of projects for the city and different things, and Ron Darnell and his men have been, and he's got a real good crew, and they've been doing a great job. I just think that we're lucky right now that we've got some good people in the right spots.
Yeah, I agree.
Wade, how about you, Mike?
Yeah, I too want to thank Ron and all the city employees for the job they are doing, things are getting to move a little faster than I thought they would, and I am so proud of that, that's happening. Also, I'd like to thank Mayor Josh Downs, who's not here, and Ruth, and Jill, and everyone that was responsible for bringing the Juneteenth holiday back. I don't know why we didn't observe it last year, but that's in the past. This is the present and the future, and federal holiday, and we will be closing our doors, and like everyone else is supposed to be doing. Also want to thank Jill, and Jeff, and the name of the other people that are responsible for that pool. That's something that's been, needed to be done, and glad that we have a nice, safe, clean, effective pool to go to. That's really important for us to have here.
Bob?
Yes. I think we got a very outstanding staff throughout our city in all departments. I am extremely proud of my department for chipping in in the job they did on the swimming pool, and at the time, we're a little undermanned. We have a couple of positions to still fill, but we're getting the job done for now. And I just think a lot of people working for this city take a lot of pride, and if you take pride in your work, you'll do a little better job, and I think that's what we've got going for us in this city at the time.
Ruth?
Yeah, I want to thank Commissioner Kirkpatrick for being the driving force on that grant and getting the work done on time, which is almost completely unheard of, but they opened on time. Actually, a lot of nice things out there. If you have a chance to go look at the pool, you should check it out, and also I want to wish my mother happy birthday today.
Happy birthday, Dorothy. And everyone in the city worked on that pool project, and I know I probably drove Doug Hill and Ron Darnell crazy, and Dean Knight, and, you know, the police came out and the fire came out. Howard was there, so, you know, it was definitely a team effort, so, you know, stuff kept coming up, and, you know, I appreciate that they still responded to all my text messages, so it was good. But no, they did a great job, great job. And they do have a lot of pride, not just in the pool, but like you said, the water treatment plan, and, you know, the fire station, and the police station, everything, so. And I know that on Sunday, June 18th, we are having a Juneteenth celebration at the park. It's 2:00 PM. I know that's Father's Day, but there's a lot of activities, food, and, you know, some fun stuff for the kids, so come out. And, okay, let me get back to this. Is there any public comment?
Pete Spitler. The 166th Annual Perry County Fair is off and running. We started last Friday with our queen pageant, had the demo derby last Saturday. The fair continues through this Saturday. I know some of you have young ones or know young ones, we're young at heart, so Carniville opens tomorrow night starting at 6:00, $2 rides, so I would just invite the commissioners to attend if they so choose.
Nice. Anybody else? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Protim.
Mayor Protim Kirkpatrick?
Yes.